I call a regular meeting of North Huntington County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, seven P.M. to order Oklahoma and Shepherd.
Mr. Harold.
Here.
Mr. Hygus.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Fessenda.
Here.
Mr. Caceres.
Here.
And Commissioner Martina.
Before we do rise to the place of leisure, I'd like to have the honor of the group four eleven come up here and group two ninety-three come up here and lead us into the place of leisure, if you want, please. Remain standing at your place of leisure for Oklahoma and Shepherd by our reference ready lines. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
The Legion's Superglad, of the United States of America, and Super Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna say a prayer for scouts?
And for our wonderful commissioners. Lord, we're thankful for this wonderful group, we're thankful for our scouts, we're thankful for a night that we assembled around even though it's a little cold, we're thankful for all good things, just bless North Huntington with many good years, and we just pray for these commissioners to be fair and honest, and we're just so thankful for them, and we're just, I should bless them, and we're thankful for this meeting, that can be a good meeting, and everybody can go home happy. We're thankful, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May you see some simple, that's regular shelter, no system template type.
Just sure for everybody in attendance tonight, we, for some people that might have been here last week, our work session in a public hearing, in public input hearing, it was related to potential development near Ybnar Road and Farns Lake Road, it was related to a PRD zoning project. And we said to the folks that were at the meeting last week that the Board of Commissioners would potentially consider discussing that tonight and moving forward with it, not approving it, but at least considering it for approval and going through the administrative process. Since then, we received recently a request from a developer to table the plan at this point, they're thinking of some other options and some other layouts for the property. So even though it's on the agenda for tonight under my report, at the pleasure of the Board, that matter won't be discussed since, to discuss it probably wouldn't be approved since they may come back with a different sort of a plan. So for anybody that's here for Ybnar Road, for the project, we certainly encourage you to stay at the meeting, but it's, I believe, not gonna be discussed tonight. And then the soonest to probably be discussed, again, is at our work session in March, and it may not even be then. So we try to post our agenda on our webpage prior to the meeting, the week before, towards the tail end of the week, for anybody that's just interested in that project. So I'm not sure if anybody's still here for that, but I just wanted to present that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just continue on approval minutes for the ASME meeting, January fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Question number three.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero. Approval minutes for the special meeting on January twelfth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Approval minutes for the regular meeting on January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero. Amendment bill.
Thank you most when we pay voucher number seven three six nine zero through voucher number seven three seven five eight.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero. Staff report. Anybody have any questions for Israel? Israel, do you have anything for Board of Commissioners?
I've nothing to add.
Thank you, sir.
No, this is good, you're not too bad.
Parks and Recreation Report. Anybody have questions for Dan Hill? Andy, you have anything?
Well, he's always tough act to follow, Mr. Albert, but he's...
As the Board knows, Dan has a big event this weekend, father-daughter, and everybody's very familiar with that, so it's a big, big project for the Rec Department, for the Rec, for the Rec Commission, so anyway, just, Dan, I don't know if you've been worse, but it's gonna be busy, it's gonna be good, every year.
Proud to say that we're sold out. We, we, we're not gonna check today, I think we have two tickets left, so should be another nice event, thank you.
Should be a nice weekend. Congratulations.
Continue on Police Report. Anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Roden? Or if you have anything for anybody? Mercy Man's Report. Everybody got a copy of it, just any questions for... Planning and Engineering Report. Fire Officials Report. Subdivision Land Development Application Report. Mr. Black.
There's just one resolution for your consideration tonight concerning subdivision two of two thousand seventeen, the William Hall Plan Number Two, to approve that subject due to sewage planning approval, which you're going to hear about in a few minutes.
Andy, are you, I apologize, are you, are we gonna do the resolution, or what are we doing there?
Yes.
I will.
Okay, but when we have that under Hall for Oakside, isn't that a resolution for the lot, and then we also have the planning watch, are they...
Correct.
Okay, so there are two separate items.
Correct.
Right, so are you gonna do under your report the resolution to...
Oh, God, I didn't want to steer you, Thunder.
No, because this...
You have the resolution to approve the subdivision.
I, and all I have is the sanitary, which is, which is separate, so you're gonna do, are you ready to do that, or...
Yes.
Okay. I thought, it seemed like...
I, I thought you didn't like me to read it. I, I'll, I'll read the resolution.
You don't have to read it, but I need, are you looking for a motion, are you ready for it?
Ready for a motion.
Okay. I apologize.
Mr. Hall.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Black. Solicitor Report.
Yes, we have an action item tonight, an action to adopt, Oros ordinance number one of two thousand seventeen, in Pasco, or in nine, to both the local county, I want to pencil in, and many orders, six seventy-three, establishing a tax for fire protection districts.
Second.
This is an amendment, or, an amendment to the old ordinance regarding fire hydrants? Yes.
Okay. Maybe some people don't know.
Sure, what this, what this ordinance does, the council enacted an ordinance, maybe in the mid-eighties, it was a tax for, for fire hydrants, for everybody, if there are fire hydrants, they pay a tax, it's relatively nominal for folks that have it on their tax bill, sometimes it's three or four or five dollars a year, it's based on village. What this does, it pays for the fire hydrant inspection, which the council sees a bill for, for the water flowing, what this does is it exempts any property that has a bill of one dollar or less, because the administrative cost of collecting that, that one dollar or less, sometimes a fifty or sixty cents in tax bill, this ordinance exempts those properties, so that's, that's the amendment.
I just wanted to clarify, this is not a new tax.
Uh, no.
It's an amendment to, to an existing, actually benefits some residents.
Reduces it, for some people, again, you're ready to check and putting a stamp on a bill for thirty or forty cents, so, right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Black. Township Manager Report.
Thank you, first item is the January check register approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero.
Item two is the Budget Report, January twenty-seventeenth, are any questions for the first month of the year? Item number three is action to approve a resolution for plan revision for new land development for the William Hall Plan Number Two of subdivision, this is in relation to the resolution Andy read, this is a requirement of DEP concerning sewage facilities planning.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero.
Item four is the item I read earlier about the rezone, if there's no more comments on that, I'll move to item five, I apologize for this.
Yeah, I'm not apologizing. I think a motion is in order to remove this item from the agenda as per the applicant's request on February fourteenth. I just wanted to be clear in ten minutes that the applicant has requested this, this will stop all further review of this project by the planning department, and extended this project, it's up to the applicant to decide what they wanna do after that, so a motion to that effect is approved.
I'll make a motion, we removed this item from the agenda, further request of the applicant dated today, February fourteenth, oh, sorry, yesterday, February fourteenth.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, seven zero.
Item five is a discussion item, it's the Chief of Police job description, we had talked about that a few months back now, and the Board had provided input concerning the job description, so I did say, tell the Board at that point, I would make some recommendations, I believe I had a feeling for what at least different people were looking for, so I did put that together for you to consider, and you have it before you. Similar to our previous job description, but we have changed some of the educational requirements, and it's formatted more like our normal, this is our format that we use here for North Huntington job descriptions, the last one came from the, from the consultant, and the format was slightly different, so that's open for discussion, I don't know if people like the, I think when you look at the duties, the general purpose, I mean, I don't think there's much to say unless there's something in there you like or don't like, I think probably the biggest, the biggest item that the Commissioners had an interest in was, what are we gonna say are the minimum requirements, so we, you know, potentially get a decent full candidate, so that's really, obviously the whole thing for discussion, but that may be of more of an interest to the Board. Two pieces, again, I'll just wrap, you, you're familiar with what I'll say for the folks who are in the audience, for the education and experience, there's two ways, this is an either-or, so it's, you know, it's listed as ten years of experience as a full-time sworn police officer, five years which must have been in supervisory role, and graduation from an accredited college, and there's, there's some various degrees that are related. The alternative would be for someone that doesn't have their college degree, they have to have fifteen years of experience, still five is in supervisory role, so it's an additional five years of experience as a full-time sworn police officer. Then it goes into the knowledge and skills, and I think, again, a lot of that's very, is very standard, but the, the minimum requirements are certainly something I think the Board may, may have some interest in.
So basically, if you have fifteen years of experience, you don't need any formal education?
Correct. No, yeah, there's no college requirements, there's no associates or some sort of certificate, there's nothing.
There's no requirement, as in the old description, for any training as far as the FBI Academy, Pollex, or deposit?
No.
Or related supervisory command school?
No, in this, this job description, this, these requirements go back to the job description, very similar to what we would have had prior to that one, Rich, the one we, the one we utilized. And it was changed during the last, the last search.
Yes.
Which you're familiar with.
I am, and I believe it was changed for the better at that time.
I could agree with Rich as far as questioning the second part of that fifteen years, I mean, anybody that's in a supervisory role should be better in themselves while they're in that role, and they should be taking deposit and Pollex and Chief Police Command Institute courses. That would be something I'd love to see there also.
I would agree with that statement, see some type of continuous education, and whatever the standard would be for those courses, you know, continuing their leadership skills, if they just prefer a better college or course work.
I'm correct, I'm wrong, if some of those courses that are required, did dress, require, don't have to be in supervisory role already, I don't think the regular, best question is can a regular patrolman locate courses for supervisory mode acting all this?
They can locate classes, thanks.
I'll get that, I'm not sure.
I mean, even in the new description, it says fifteen years of experience as a full-time police officer, five years of which must have been in a supervisory role, so if you have five years in the supervisory role, why would you take these classes?
Well, that's fine, I'll get that, that's all, just trying to understand.
But a regular patrol officer could take...
Yeah, this, this, this been a requirement, still required, some level of supervisor experience, those five years, that number can be whatever you think makes sense, but I, I mean, you theoretically could not have that, but I think it makes sense to have that level, some level of supervisor experience to be the, to be the chief of a relatively large department. I mean, those are things you can add, this is really, you know, where do you guys wanna go with this, and you said that been on standard, and that, you know, make sure people need that, that are interested in a lot.
Would all, Wayne, would all, did you want to maybe add this? Would you like, I mean, we wanna make sure we're all on the same page, so, all right, could you like to update this?
Yeah, I...
Get it back, plus.
I don't have a problem with the old one, but I believe the old one, they state on Must be graduating from at least one police command training school, such as the FBI Academy, Pollex, or deposit, or a related supervisory command school. So that would mean that they have to be, they showed some effort to...
Years.
Yeah, they went, they wanted to come, I mean, and get some type of command.
So, Wayne, do you recommend to add that to the or portions?
Yes.
I, I agree with that.
So you're saying that would be for the folks that don't have the college degree?
Yes.
Right, that's, okay. You familiar with the, with the programs?
Is that something you actually graduate from, is that the right term for someone that's completed? A certificate of completion is saying that you attended it, and you passed it.
Are there different components?
Yes, deposit is one, Pollex is a whole different thing, you take deposit before you take Pollex.
Okay.
They're two different, and they're, now they're broken down, they used to be, they were one, one session each, like a week each, now they're two weeks each session, they go, I don't even prefer to add more material.
If you have a certificate of completion, you've completed it.
Yes.
There's not various components of it, it's from one program.
No, you complete your whole...
Yeah, it's much more likely we're gonna have people, especially internal candidates, that have done that, rather than go onto the FBI Academy, other people have done that, but that's, you know, we can still put that in there, if you want external, there's some people that have done that, but that's, these, these classes are probably more, most likely what our employees would have.
Yeah, Pollex, Pollex Command Institute, exactly, it would be more the classes that our people would have, versus, I think, there's only been one person in the department that's ever gone to the FBI Academy.
Right.
Right.
We can still put it in there, if someone hasn't graduated, we can put it in there.
Yeah, I think the common ones that are officers should be taken if they want more agenda advances.
I also have an issue, I mean, I, I think everything that follows or in that job, or the, because our minimum qualifications is, is one sentence, basically, fifteen years of experience as a full-time sworn officer, five years of which must have been in a supervisory role, and I also think we're overlooking what used to be in the old one, which was experience in budgetary responsibility, collective bargaining, of course, computer literacy that may be given, and some community completion. The big one to me is budgetary responsibility and collective bargaining, really, I think they should be requirements in there, too.
Yeah, those are really good, the skills and abilities, the, the knowledge, skills and abilities, we can put those in there, because that's really what the, the next pieces talk about, so you can certainly put those in there, and those would be, those would be good additions.
John, I wanted to ask you about a possible residency clause. I didn't see one in the new job description, maybe you did only a year, new to our township.
Yeah, Mike, believe me, anything you'd like to do with that would be fine, I'm not, I'm not sure if you'd go on the job description, that it, that it might, I mean, I think normally we wouldn't put it there, but I understand your, you know, what your thoughts are.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of where to, where to put that, and I'm just, I'm thinking for the description, maybe, or maybe, you know, maybe some other place, for someone that's interested, you, maybe you'd wanna say, I mean, if you did an advertisement, even internal or external, well, I see those, a lot of times it'll say quite clearly what you're saying, six months, one year, residency required, I think you'd wanna put it somewhere else to people, and I'm not sure if this is the place, but if that's something you guys wanna do, I wouldn't be opposed to that, I think that's...
Like, that was from the old one, it says, "This position requires that the selected police chief reside within a twenty-mile radius of the township building, within one year from the date of hire."
Yeah, I, I just think that's maybe not the place to put it, I have no problem putting it in here if you want that, I just think this probably, this is more the description of the job versus a condition of employment. I, I know, I didn't have anything to do with writing that one, but I just, I just think, because even if it's a sign-on letter for that, that's, it's kind of, it's, it's different, I would, I'd put it somewhere else, but I have no problem making that a condition, if that's what you wanna do, and say this is what, you know, it's a condition of employment to move in and continue residency, that wouldn't be an issue.
Usually you enter into a contract with the candidate, and certainly that's an appropriate relationship, but...
I, I agree, I think that's gonna go down in discussion.
But it's a good point, it's a good point, and it is in the old one, I apologize, that was, maybe made sense for that one, but there's a few things I apologize, maybe not right twice with that one. Does the Board have any issues, including the knowledge, skills, and abilities of budgetary, and also collective bargaining? Just adding some additional requirements of what you expect them to have?
Yeah, it's added towards your bullet points of knowledge and skills, that's...
Right, that's where we...
Yeah, the one other thing that I'm still a little bit on that one is, is the degree, I mean, I understand, I know Wayne has raised this issue before, but you wanna open it up to as many internal candidates as you can, and we do want the best, and I just, I have an issue with law requiring any degree whatsoever. I mean, I think, you know, I was hearing, you had mentioned...
The old one had an associate's degree with the different experience levels, if I remember correctly.
For the, yeah, you know, above the or, for the education experience, we, we're asking for a master's degree is preferred, to go from a master's degree being preferred to we don't want you to have anything, or we don't care if you have anything, I think that's too much of a swing. I, I would, I would at least like to see an associate's degree in political science or criminal justice, or public administration, preferably in police science or criminal justice, if you all...
My only thought, but I, I hear what you're saying, I'm gonna have a good evaluation, but I just, I wouldn't wanna limit ourselves to the point where we, at least, you know, good officers, they're, they're educated, I just would, I don't know, I just would wanna at least have candidates who, who are interested.
I, I agree.
That's just, that's just my opinion, and I think master's degree, prefer, I think definitely, if someone maybe with a college degree, you give, you give maybe a little more checkmark. The other one's just minimum qualifications to get them into the door, but if someone has more than preferred qualifications, I think they would, they would maybe rise up a little bit. But I understand what you're saying, I mean, I think education's important.
Well, but I've been this hot, self-sure, like experience as an education as well.
I agree, I, I totally agree, but this is not an entry level or a middle level position, this is at the top, you're coming in at the top, or you're getting, being elevated to the top, what's our budget for the police this year, four point four or four point six million, something like that?
Significant.
I think we went back to the last police chief hired, I, I wanted to stay at the bachelor degree level, and I, I was, you know, I'll vote on that, the associate's degree, and I would like to still at least see the associate's degree, I mean, preferably I would wanna see the bachelor's degree myself, but I would like to at least see some type of degree there, two-year degree, associate's degree there, and the secondary part.
Everybody's pleasure.
I think, I think being, making an associate's degree is being pretty generous for the impact, you know, the, the position.
I don't wanna steal Wayne's thunder, but I think if a employee was motivated that this was their goal, and career path, they might go and continue their education throughout the course of being an officer.
I hear what you're saying, there, the fact that, and I understand it, but sometimes it's difficult for people to do the job that they have, and maybe lock in the associate degree, not saying it can't be done, but it is difficult for a safe police officer, that's what it is, and shifts and stuff like that.
Actually, I mean, the first part, color is green and everything, and the other part is or, so that just throw more people into the mix, if the township, or we decide, or whoever gives the names and that, that some of the officers that are in the second part, that are more qualified than the first, that's the ones you're gonna hire, the second part just kind of is a little bit of a patter boy to get some of the other officers that have the experience, have been on the road, you know, without having the school or the college. And let's face it, some of the officers that do have college, and I remember only all would promote justice, pretty soon.
I would definitely say I would agree with you on the fact of having some real experience and spending time in a supervisory role, but I think some of the other requirements that John mentioned, some of the degree background might help in some of those areas that John mentioned below, the skill sets, knowledge, and abilities, as far as administrative part of the education background might help with that.
Yeah, I mean, to you guys, I mean, I think, you know, that we were gonna try to look internal on this, if we're gonna look internal, I'd like to have candidates, if we're, you know, if it's not that, then, you know, you could potentially really widen your candidate pool with external candidates, and I just, I wouldn't wanna be in a situation where you didn't have candidates internally, you wanna have a nice group to pick from, that's my thinking on this, but I understand, I understand if you feel differently, I, I understand that.
I, I agree with you, John, I think we're already putting in there, you know, by I agree with you, John, I think we're already putting in there, you know, by Polx and the other, other courses, guys, and then they're continuing education. I, I, my opinion, I say we put that in there, and I'm glad that, except we gotta hire from the school.
Right. We've been adding departments, we're just wondering if I can hear you.
Right. The label question's correct.
I have, I have.
Anything else? Good to go? On your case?
Well, what I, yeah, I want to bring back to you the exact words, and I, and I'll do that, and then we'll prove, because this has, we, in the past, we formally approved these, so, we'll do a motion in a second, and then ultimately it gets signed off, and I'll tell you, he's the president of the board, and that's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna go with, so I will bring it back to you once I get it done, there's a lot of changes, but I'll make sure you get those changes, that could be the next step in the process.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Next item is further board comment.
AARP Tax Aid will be available Tuesday and Thursday from nine AM until one PM, and also the board held an executive session on February the second of this year to discuss personnel matters. What other announcements got on here, for the folks that are here tonight, and for Joe? The township is currently accepting applications for entry-level police officers, that's a civil service test, and the applications are currently available, for Anne, I apologize, is here, where you can get an application on the township's webpage, information concerning that is on our webpage, and I believe applications are due March tenth, so there's the full-time position, there's information on there, so anybody that's interested can apply, do the civil service testing, and ultimately have a potential to be hired as a, as a full-time officer in North Huntington, so, if you're looking for more information on that, it is on our, it is on our webpage. Yeah, applications are here, too, but absolutely, webpage is an easy way to download it and take a look at it.
Thank you, John. Any one more voting?
I do. What's your return? Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, we adjourned, seven thirty-five PM.